All right, we begin our commission meeting. And serve the pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome to our work session for August 15th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded. And if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent. Ms. Salsley, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have several additions. Request for comments on Amendment Number One and draft proposed order update, a personal property tax cut cancellation, and an order designated newspaper.
All right, thank you. Our first set of business, though, is juvenile department introduction.
All right, good morning, everyone. I'm here to officially introduce our, the community justice new youth coordinator position, Kelly Hall. Local graduate, Lakeview High School, 2008. And then she went on to University of Idaho and then worked at her masters and been working in education for the last 10 years. So she'll be working alongside Mr. Nickle here for the next couple of weeks. And then he'll pass the torch at the end of the month and be departing us. So we're happy to have her, welcome.
Thank you.
And obviously, I think you know everybody.
Can you do the kayak roll?
She didn't know it was part of the job description, but she's gonna figure it out real quick. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, great having you.
Thanks.
Yeah, we haven't formally met, but I passed you just briefly this morning as you were arriving. I didn't know who you were, but it's great to
Yes.
put those two pieces together, so.
Good to be here.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you guys want a formal picture? Or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have a picture. Come on, Jim.
What? I'm on my way out. You guys do the picture.
You're passing the torch.
Yeah. Where do we go?
Just right here.
Are you serious?
Don't make me cry.
I'm gonna cry in the picture.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, undersheriff will be in, radio and repeater purchases.
Talking about millions of dollars, right? Having not done this but once, I'm assuming you'd like to know a little bit of the background of what I'm requesting. In addition to the cost that the board has already approved for the new trucks that we're having set up. When we came before you, I mean, the sheriff came before you before, the board approved roughly $34,000 per vehicle for the build cost, in addition to the vehicle costs for setup, for all the police equipment. Since that time, I contacted our leader, who was doing our vehicle outfit, and negotiated with them and got that cost down to roughly the high 26 range right now.
I know it's approximately $7,000.
Yeah, it was around, I saved us about 27, or I'm sorry, saved us about $7,000 per vehicle on the outfit because there was a lot of equipment that I'm not certain, I did not feel was completely necessary. And given how our budget is and things like that, I thought that the savings, at the time that I did that, I realized that the radios and repeaters that were listed on those build sheets were not part of the cost. So they had not, they were not included in that cost of $34,000 roughly per vehicle, but they had not been ordered either with any of the equipment that had been ordered. So once I found that out, I contacted Day Wireless, our vendor for these items, and I got the cost, which is what I'm in front of the board today to ask for approval to spend the money to order the mobile radios and repeaters. The cost, the additional cost that was not included in that original price is $16,121.92 on the radio side. That's for all three vehicles, not per vehicle. And then for the repeat, the mobile repeaters mounted in vehicles, the total amount that I'm asking for is $17,537.93. The total of that, I'll get out my calculator, and the total is correctly in front of me here. I'll have to know this right off the top of my head.
So that's the installation and everything else?
Yes. Programming installation, I did not have them include the travel because they charged us about $2,000 to come to Lakeview and program the, or install the equipment. And so they're located in Planet Falls. So I agreed that we would just bring the trucks there to have that done, to save that additional cost. The total amount I'm asking for is $33,659.85 for all three trucks, three repeaters, three radios. In the meantime, because the delay time for these items is roughly 20 weeks, I reached out to another law enforcement agency and got DHF radios that are an older model, but they're able to contain the majority of the radio frequencies that we need, that they've removed from their vehicles. And I've already delivered those to Lear. Those are being installed in the trucks right now that are being outfitted. And then once these new radios come in sometime next year, then we'll deal with getting these new radios and repeaters installed.
I'd like to add that I'm very grateful for the savings that you found in a bit. Between that and the money that we have budgeted in the radio fund, we should be able to afford this.
Out of which fund?
Out of 154 and out of the radio fund. And I don't remember the exact number on that one.
What was the total sum again? It was 30?
And for this, for the future, we're not going to be just automatically going with the vendor we're using for outfit and equipment. I'm working with Melanie to do an RFP to go back out and see if there are other vendors that can do this more affordably because vehicles are getting more expensive and equipment's getting more expensive. It seems like a lot of money per vehicle, and I think we can trim that back.
I mean, and maybe not. I mean, because you're right, I mean, it is getting more expensive.
It is.
Appreciate going the extra mile, trying to find some cost savings. I know this took some time. Been at this a while, trying to put this down, so.
Yes.
Appreciate the efforts because I know you've got other things to do, too. We'd like to get those trucks in service, too.
And they're now being outfitted. I was at their shop about three weeks ago, and they said there was about a six-week turnaround. There was a couple items that they were still waiting to arrive that they expected them to arrive that week. So there shouldn't be any more delay. And I'd like to apologize to the board for not, this cost not being included in what I originally asked for because I just, I overlooked it and didn't see that it wasn't in the original build sheet.
I'm worried at all.
Historically, though, to his defense, they have been included in radio builds. I think they've just gotten so expensive that the vendor decided to put that on us, and we didn't realize that.
Yeah. Okay. Cost of the business. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I see Lori Hutchinson may be on.
She's here.
Mark is here. I thought he sounded different than this.
Apparently.
Is he?
Whatever changes you want. He said he wanted changes, and he just put it in.
Right. Good morning, Lori, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Very well, good. I hear you would like to get us updated today.
Must have.
Yeah, I thought it would be a good idea to just open us up for any questions you might have ahead of our public meeting next week and see if you have any questions that are coming to you about Obsidian Solar Center's request for amendment to FSEC. So I don't have any agenda in mind other than to just give a high-level review of what the amendment is about and then just open it up for any questions you have or that you might be hearing from your constituents.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, so I think I extend a summary to each of you. The amendment is pretty basic. The biggest thing is that we are interconnecting to the East Bonneville Line rather than the West Bonneville Line. So we've added land to the east of the lines. And that's also Dinsdale property that they own both sides of the Bonneville Lines there. So we've added some land to our site certificate. The final outline of the project, the final map of the project, gets rectified when we are approaching construction. So it will be either or. We'll be on the west line or the east line. It's 98% certain we'll be on the east line. So we do need to move forward with this land on the east. The main thing that's confusing, I think, is we've added 169 acres and we subsequently submitted to Oregon Department of Energy that we don't need that much land. So we're only impacting that 5/8 pivot that belongs to the Dinsdales on the east side of the line. So we can cite our substation within 12 acres within the 89 acres that's basically east of the line. So that's a little bit confusing. The maps are confusing. But we basically will be only impacting that one 5/8 pivot that's east of the line. So that's the main change. The other changes are just sort of technical in nature. We upgraded, we upsized the Gent High Line from 115 to a 138 KV line. That's under ODO's rules, that's considered significant. And then we extended the length of the Gent High. When we originally wrote up our application, we didn't consider, you know, one of the things we've done is moved the substation farther north on the line to get away from, you know, to put our, to cite our substations a little further away from the neighbors. So we basically had to add a little length of Gent High to basically be able to cite our substation pretty far north on the property, which will take it off of Conley a good way, a good bit, and hopefully far enough away from the neighbors that it won't be a big, you know, they won't notice it so much. So those are the main changes. Amendments are expected under the FSEC process. We may need to amend again. That's just how it works. You get a site certificate in fairly particular detail. And so this would amend the site certificate that we have. There's a red line on the Oregon Department of Energy site that basically changes all the details relating to those three things that I just went through. Other things we could expect amended for are, I think, if we need to put the construction date or something like that. So it's a fairly lengthy process. We try to avoid it and we try to sort of foresee everything Oregon Department of Energy might want to know or sort of go beyond what we think we need to make sure we've got everything we need under our site certificate. But it just doesn't, you know, it didn't work out that way. So we're in the amendment process. And that's where we are. And so, yeah, are there any questions? Or are you encountering any questions from the public?
Well, I don't know, just the only things that I've gotten from the public, Lori, and I've kind of shared this with you, is the confusion over the additional footprint east of the line, extending beyond what is actually going to be affected. Because it's got kind of, it's got two different colors on the map, you know, and it extends way out there. But that is not part of any of the construction or any part of the substation whatsoever. Can you maybe explain that a little bit so that folks have a little better understanding?
Yeah, so we basically, we're, our amendment and our FSEC site certificate covers just what Obsidian builds. The EPA substation that will actually take the project up to the power lines is under EPA's federal process. So, but we wanted to get studying, get going on studying and foreseeing any troubles on what EPA might need also. So we asked EPA for an estimate of what it might need for its substation, and they gave us kind of outrageous estimate of what they needed. I don't think they even are using a tenth of what they said they thought they needed. So, so we, and then as we, you know, we got EPA to rein in, you know, we're a little further down the study process with EPA as we realized that their substation will be under 20 acres. We reined in that footprint so that, you know, just to quash any concerns about, you know, how far we're going across property land that's already irrigated. So, yeah, it's a little awkward because that 169 acres is still technically in our, in our site boundary. But if you read into the actual draft proposed order language from FSEC, we're only allowed to cite on the 89 acres, AKA that sort of purple lavender area in the map that's in the public notice. And we're only allowed to cite on 12 acres of that 89 acres.
Yeah, so it's a fraction of the 160 acres that shows on this map. And I think that was causing a little bit of confusion with folks that were actually looking at the material. They were puzzled by such a, you know, 160-acre substation is quite significant.
Insane.
Unverbal. So, yeah.
And we did also ask, we've been working with the Dinsdales. We asked them to put a letter in the record on their intentions to move the water rights. So they may, hopefully there'll be a net gain. I don't know where they plan to move the water to, but it's a 5/8 pivot that we're impacting, we and EPA are impacting. So with any luck, they might actually be able to move it to a parcel where they can do a full pivot if they have the water rights.
Yeah. Lori, we read more and more about, you know, like the Capital Press this week or last week, talking about electricity and dam removals. And, you know, are we getting the cart in front of the horse here? Because renewable energy is obviously going to have more demand. And yet, I still don't hear you talk about battery storage. This must still not be on the plans. Is that something that could be added later? Or what's going on? And it just seems like maybe, is there a rush or not for renewable energy?
We're in a rush for renewable energy. Right now, Bonneville Power is not in a rush. And not all parts of Bonneville. Like, we're working with Bonneville on interconnection. And it's all, they've hired it out to a third party, it's go-go-go. But on the transmission side, getting approval on the, on, to transmit the power with the parties that we're working with, Bonneville is really slow-walking that. So just on our project level, that's what's taking so long. As far as renewable energy generally, Bonneville is our main transmission provider in the west. Their map covers Washington, Oregon, Montana, Idaho. And they've been slow to grab on to the central piece that they play in making sure that energy can get out of really rural, sunny, windy areas. I think they're picking up the pace now. They're starting to see pressure from all, you know, from electeds and other people to sort of acknowledge that they are, you know, the goals that Washington has set, the goals that certain Washington utilities are trying to meet, the goals that Oregon's trying to meet. They play a central piece in being able to realize that. So, yes, there's an immense amount of energy that's needed. And also, I think a lot of, I'm just kind of waxing on now, but the utilities that we're working with, they're seeing load growth for the first time in 10 or 15 years. So I think they're also scrambling to, you know, they've been able to sort of rely on their dams and sell the excess off the dams. But now, you know, they've got very large customers, you know, data centers and so forth, that are using really large amounts of energy and people wanting to electrify their cars in cities where it makes sense. So, yeah, I think that the need is great and the pace can't possibly go fast enough.
Yeah, the need for that electricity is growing at a faster rate than it's being, than the generation is being constructed. And as they take dams offline, if they move further in that direction, it only compounds that issue. And that's why I've said it very publicly that I believe that we are on the precipice and the edge of another energy rush, whether it be solar, renewable energy in general. And that's kind of where it's going. And I know David is looking at other alternative energy aside from solar or wind. Wind makes absolutely no sense in Lake County. You wouldn't think it because we have a ton of it. But it just doesn't work because of the inconsistency of wind that we have and the severity. But solar has made more economic sense for us, I suppose, in term, and I'm not saying that because I say I want to see tens of thousands of more acres of solar in Lake County. It's just that I know that if they're going to put it somewhere, they're not going to put it in western Oregon. They're going to put it in places like eastern Oregon where the sun shines 300 days a year. And they're, and that's where they're going to look at the sighting. And that's why I think the utility companies need to really think hard about this, that the current infrastructure, the way it is right now, the capacity on the lines that exist within rural Oregon and rural America, whether it be Idaho, Montana, it is not, it is not going to sustain the need, the growing need for additional energy generation in those places in order to get it to where the market is consuming it. So, I mean, that's essentially, you know, one of you guys' biggest struggles right now, I think, you know, and aside from navigating the FSEC process. But I think it's, to Commissioner Schillingberg's comment about the cart before the horse, I think there's a lot of that going on right now on both state and national politics.
Yeah. I think they've slowed down on the dam removals, but I, but yeah, they certainly keeps cropping up, so.
Yeah. I do suppose I'd like to make sure that, I don't know how, what the turnout will be at this next meeting coming up in Christians Valley and how many folks will likely want to participate and give comment. I imagine we'll see a few of the locals. But I think, obviously, anyone's free to bring up any aspect or any issue within the application that they wish. But I think what I'd like to reiterate, even just with you and publicly within this meeting, is that this site amendment, I'd love to see the comments simply address that and stay within the confines of the actual amendment itself. Because you already have a site certificate for the application. The amendment itself is where we're wanting to see that comment and the consideration from the public. And if there's any pitfalls and things that we haven't already identified, which I can't really imagine. But if there are any, I'd like to hear those. And so I suppose, just publicly, I'm saying this for the record, that I'd really like to see, and encourage the public to keep their comments concise and to the point on the actual amendment itself. I don't have anything else to put. All right. So Lori, are you needing anything from us?
No, I don't need anything from you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to resummarize what the amendment is about. I know I sent you a summary a month or so ago, but just wanted to resummarize what it's about in case you're getting questions. And just make sure, you know, the phone is on if you hear anything that you think I should attend to. And I did a little listening tour in Fort Rock last week. And, you know, one of the things that was reiterated, which we do have an intention to do, is to make sure that we, when we do get to a point of knowing we're going to construct and that's on the, on a foreseeable horizon, we should have a meeting in Fort Rock in Christians Valley and make sure to let people know, you know, what impacts they can expect, what should they do if they're seeing traffic issues or dust issues or, you know, what are the logistics? And then, you know, I have several locals who are calling me wanting to know, when does the work start? So, you know, want to be able to sort of wrap all that sort of local communication and when the time is appropriate. And so we have an intention to do that, but we'll wait until we can see that we've got a, that construction is imminent.
And then the labor that you're going to be needing, is that union labor or is that?
We don't have a project, we are required, well, the law doesn't, the law gives you options, but it strongly encourages project labor agreements. So we, yeah, there will definitely be union presence on the site. We've been doing some thinking and talking to our intended EPC contractor about how to do that and make sure that we can still hire a good number of locals. And one of the things that I think has been a little bit helpful is we've reiterated that early to the laborers' union, who expects to be one of the parties to that project labor agreement. So they've indicated that they've heard us that, you know, we've had success because we've worked with locals and whatever we do needs to work with that. So there will be union presence. I don't know exactly how that's going to roll out. For certain, there will be IBEW. I think a lot of people will be able to get on the project as material handlers under IBEW. And then we'll have to, we'll have to negotiate with laborers' union and make sure that we write that project labor agreement in such a way that, that we don't put undue barriers on for hiring locals. But I can't say that I know how that's going to look. We've been thinking about it, but we're not to the point of negotiating that yet. So, yes, union presence is expected.
Sure weighs the board to appreciate any local help that could be hired. Would be something that we obviously advocate for.
Yeah, me as well. I'd be, I'd be dead in the water without a couple of local people who help me with all kinds of things beyond the work they've done on our projects.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Lori, for joining us today and giving us the update.
Great, hopefully I'll see some of you in Christians Valley next week. If not, I hope to see you down in Lakeview sometime this fall.
All right, sounds good. Sounds good.
All right, take care.
See you. All right. Is Dave Dolls going to join us?
Yeah, we're moving much quicker than I anticipated, so I just texted him.
All right, we can move down to the LCSCA Provider Services Agreements.
So ODOT just signed the agreements that we approved earlier in meetings. I haven't gotten those back, but I'd like to get these established. And I worked with my RC and she said that's fine to start these now, just so we can, they're a little slow getting those executed. Normally, they've been executed before the year starts. So I was holding off on these until we got those. But she said I can but she said I can start processing these, so. Anyways, these are agreements with our contracted providers for 5310, STIF, STF, and Veterans Transportation Funding. Just kind of spells out our expectations, the laws that they need to follow for our regulations, ODOTs, and the FDAs.
So it's an agreement between Lake County Senior Citizens Solicitation and Lake County?
Mm-hmm.
And the other one's the Inter Court Family Center?
Mm-hmm. And those amounts have been agreed upon by the Advisory Committee and the providers.
And what will, what will be the service provided, transportation?
Yes. And then there is an ICFC agreement for Inter Court Family Center, and it's basically identical, just the sums are a little different.
Yeah, I had to take a double take, see if I got a replica here. Thought I was getting two of the same.
Almost.
All right, so this is grant funding.
Mm-hmm.
It's all proposed to it for open citizens like. All right, any questions through these commissioners?
I'm working on getting a free bus. Cross your fingers. It's from Region One, so they have priority. But if they don't want it in Region One, we have first priority outside of the region, so.
What type of bus?
It's an E3.
Oh, yeah?
So, I'm really excited.
Where is Region One?
Over.
Or plus already?
Mm-hmm. Or Region Four?
Did we move to Region Five? Are we in the new region now?
For ODOT?
Oh, not for ODOT, yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm just waiting on Dave. Do you want to do any liaison updates?
Still, I'm going to be working with the library on the 2018 plan for the new Kristen's Valley Library that was put together. In my opinion, I think it was, it's a great, it's a great concept, but I think it, I think it goes beyond the actual needs of the community. I think what we'd be looking for, and I think what the library, Marcia and I are in agreement that, I think what we need up there is something a little bit more modest, that centers on efficiencies in terms of energy costs to maintain. So we're looking at the square footage. We may be looking at, you know, very different blueprints and drawings for the actual layout and hopefully reduce the cost of that significant thing. But I'm going to try and get on the agenda this next month, on the fifth or sixth, to where Marcia can come and sit down with us and talk and share a little bit about what the library board is thinking as well. And we're going to look at properties and locations for the placement of a new library in Kristen's Valley as well. So that, it's just something that we can kind of consider going forward. I've had some discussion with Dave Berman about potentially even building on the county lot where the annex is currently. There's a portion of that building that is not being used at all right now, and the entirety of the building is quite old. And there may be some utility and building new. And you've seen some unused space of those four lots that the county owns there. And in which case, these funds would not have to go to purchasing another site and it would be, the location itself is quite conveniently located right there by the Flowery Park, which is a beautiful location for a library and across the street from the health clinic. And it's, it's kind of becoming a little bit of the central location of the town itself. And if you drive by the annex currently, it doesn't really look like a government building. It's a house that's been retrofitted into office spaces. So just, conceptually, right now, we're looking at maybe a smaller, modest library that houses, you know, a small amount of books, as books don't seem to be the primary go-to in a library anymore. They want computer access stations, and then that people want to be able to order a book if they aren't interested in one. But housing large amounts of books just doesn't seem like it's going to meet the major, majority needs of the community, at least from Marcia's perspective and my own. So having workstations, square footage to accommodate that, and then it's a decent-sized meeting room and conference room, whether it be four county meetings in the future, having ADA-approved bathrooms, and then maybe having additional offices on the back of the building for county purposes. That would not be included within the CDPG for those additional office spaces necessarily, but for the conference room and the library's purposes, I think there's plenty of land there to utilize for a new library. It's just thoughts right now for Marcia and I. We're going to come up with some backup, backup plans, and we'll bring those all to you guys, hopefully the early part of this next month, for discussion, consideration, and maybe have a direction before we go to the library, actually drawing up engineered drawings and plans. We also want to be able to have community meetings at some point too, and we have to do that in alignment with the CDPG and find out what the community actually wants as well. Uh, that's, that's my liaison update on the library.
Has she thought about the properties that we were going to hold for her in the commercial area?
Yeah, we have those as kind of backups right now in our mind, but none of them are really.
They're not suitable, probably?
I, I, I don't think any of them are not suitable. I, I think they're just, it's the locale in terms of, you know, like, okay, there's one down the street from the gas station, up from, you know, across from the airport. There's a few others kind of scattered around, and they're not, they're not terrible options.
One across from the fire department.
Yeah, one across from the fire department.
They're, that's not a walking path area.
At the moment, it's not. And that's why we were thinking the annex, because it is more of a walking area. There's shops there. It is kind of the natural growth of the community that that has been, that's been growing into the central location. And again, having that direct access to the park is just very convenient. And, and maybe we can utilize some more of what is currently lawn at the annex that isn't being used by anything other than time it takes to moment. If we could use it for something else, rather than be it additional parking or the square footage to be considered for a building, it would eliminate some of the emoting, which would obviously be very beneficial for Dave Berman. And it would be, enable us to imagine, reimagine the area and reimagine what we actually want to see there. It's, to see a library as you drive by there on the street might be really, might be nicer than just kind of the tucked away, you know, building. And having a back access and using the back area there for sheriff's office and other things, if we're going to reimagine, maybe building something there for the sheriff's office someday, might be good to consider what space we actually need for the additional officers and everything as well. So just things to consider. But that's, there'll be plenty of time for that. While we're on liaison updates, I was curious, where are we with the grant writer? Do we, have we kind of made any kind of a decision on or thought about that? It's not on the agenda, I'm just curious if you want to go on about that.
So she's wanting to contract to us to approve in the meeting.
Okay, so you haven't got that yet?
No, I haven't, sorry.
So per hour, she's more than Sharon Lighty was, but Melanie and I were talking that if we have, you know how she said she lowered the hours if we did like $6,000 a year, $10,000 a year? Well, Sharon had like the 30 or 40,000 total.
No, not quite. So I averaged the time that our previous person did per year, and it was about 200 hours. So we asked if she'd be interested in 100 hours at her base rate. And then she's going to include a research rate of $50, and then anything above what is agreed upon in the contract will just be normally charged. So let's stretch our money a little bit.
Sure. That's good. We might want to just contact her and see where she is with the contract. Just kind of. Did she, did she say she'd get this, how long ago she said she'd get a contract this?
She said she'd try to get it to me by Friday, but it might be the end of this week. And I said, that's fine. Because even if she got it to me last Friday, I wouldn't have had time to get it to Paige and get it reviewed, so I said just by the next meeting, but I can.
No, it's all right, that's what she's told you. We're on a good pace anyway.
Yeah.
Good. Good. Any liaison update?
The fairgrounds projects are, we got the arena completely done except for there's a little electrical that they're going to do in the next week. But that should be all ready to go. Everything is full force preparing for the fair and roundup for Labor Day weekend, and so everybody is busy. There's some things that came up with the Green CNET project that I will talk to you guys offline about, since there's some legal things that we have to take care of.
Junior rodeo was this last weekend, had a lot of participants.
Yep.
Make their numbers way up, source participants and whatnot. Seen the new arena, worked good.
Yep.
And a few bugs maybe?
Like I have told you guys before, one of the main reasons we did all the work is because the professional livestock that they're bringing in, they, for the safety of the livestock and the safety of the participants, they want updated professional shoots and that sort of thing, which we did. If you haven't been down there, you need to go look at it, it's really good. We moved everything up 50 feet, and so everything's 50 feet closer. You'll notice there's like an alleyway kind of between the grandstands and the actual arena, which has to be done because of fire for people to get out of the grandstands if they're going straight out. We didn't want them, you know, during the middle of a bull ride or something. And so that had to be done.
It's used as a return alley though for the.
It's a re, return alley, so people are going to see things that they never going to see before. Brand new announcer stand, they're finishing up the stairs for that. And it will be done. We're going to haul in a little more sand on the north end of the arena. And working in, and everything's working pretty well. I mean, of course, we had lots of hiccups and stuff, but outcome has been really good.
Are they still doing kickoff dinner over on that far side?
I haven't heard anything. I, I know that they are, but I haven't heard it then or anything yet. So there is a roundup meeting on Thursday this week, and so. That's about it.
So my liaison update, North Lakeview Water is wrapping up, and we're down to just minor details. I noticed they removed a fire hydrant by Sunset Cemetery. I don't know if you guys kind of noticed, it kind of stuck out there a little bit. ODOT asked that, if it wasn't necessary, that it, they asked if it could be removed. So they removed it yesterday. Paving was done late last week on Missouri Avenue, on Industrial Way, on the LDS entrance and exits. Anywhere where they cut pavement before that work was done, looks like they're just fine-tuning some things and whatnot. I went and visited Greg Larson and his business yesterday, and he said they're, you know, each individual, either household or business, has to pay for their own hookups and whatnot. And so he said he's close. His sewer was hooked up, and that was a big deal for them with 95 employees. So that is a big relief on their part, but they're hoping to have water here pretty soon.
Have the lines been charged yet?
For the sprinkler system?
No, for the whole, the whole line, is there water in the line now or?
I believe there's water in the line, yes, and it's been tested. Everything's cleared. It's just a matter of whether you're hooked up and ready, so. We're getting close, maybe by our next meeting is we can say that we're wrapping up. Next thing is, had a meeting yesterday with the users of 911 in Paisley, and we talked about this longstanding project that we've been talking about with the town, about what to do with 911. Does the county take it over, does the town keep it? You know, what does that look like? This has been going on for quite some time now, started in 2022. Here we are past mid '23. I think what really came down to, we're really close to the county taking it over, but Treasurer Ann Crumright found this, and this is a summary of the PERS employer contribution rates. And this was a factor that if the county took over 911, our PERS rate is 19.8%. And the town's PERS rate is 8.3%. So what that means is, you know, that's probably at a minimum a $50,000 increase that we'd be paying in the PERS rate, just if the county now had those employees per year. And we've seen how the users' rates, you know, first thing we did was get user rates online, asking different fire departments, EMS groups, the hospital, you know, with their, with Tyson Lane's EMS, and the county and the town. Our numbers have skyrocketed and what we're doing is support nine one one. Here we went from forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty one to now we're up to a hundred and eighty thousand. You add another fifty thousand plus, it may be as much as ninety thousand. When you're at full capacity for the county to pay in PERS. Where does this stop, you know? The costs obviously are astronomical if the county were to take over. It's a big factor. The town has completed their bookwork and. You know, have closed out their previous years and they found out exactly where they're at. Money wise with nine one one and they realize, they have come to the summary that they're in the black. About a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So a lot of that is due to user groups paying dues. We know that the cost of operating nine one one is going to increase every year because of labor. You know. The costs of upgrading their equipment. We know their CAT system is out of date. And it's gonna need to be improved. There's lots of costs involved, but it would be more costly to. You know, the public of Lake County if the county were to take over. So what I proposed to the group in Paisley yesterday is. We wanna see this stay with the town. We're going to fully support the town to make sure nine one one. Gets back to a high, high standard level that we want it to be at. We know that there's things that we want to see improvements on. We've talked a lot about salaries. A lot of those jobs are not the highest paying entry level jobs. And too many people are just using it as a stepping stone, so we're going through people like crazy. And nobody ever sticks, so we've got to find a wage that is. Somebody wants to to do the job and feel proud about and do a good job for us. They also are gonna look at getting a director position advertised. Probably currently they budget for seventy or seventy. Two thousand dollars. We looked at some of our comparable counties such as Harney County and Grant County. They're in the eighty plus category for a director job, so. You know, I'm gonna work with them to find out what is a good rate that will. Attract a director to wanna do a good job and be here. And help set the base level to do a good job for nine one one, so. A lot of moving pieces there, but. It's my recommendation right now that the county not take over nine one one. We keep it with the town. We support the town. Keep working on all these things I just talked about to help them be successful.
So are your user groups happier that we're moving forward to help fix it?
The user groups understand the issue. The user groups want to see improvements. There's been some software issues recently at nine one one. Such as when somebody dials up nine one one, you know, we used to be pinpointed exactly where that call's coming from. Between the map and the phone call. That's an issue that, that technology currently is not operating the way it should be. And they need to get Lumen and day wireless gurus together to figure out what's going on. The texting, the cats, you know, there's just a lot of improvements that need to be made. That fire departments, EMS groups are all seeing, you know, that. They'd like to see a higher quality level of service. That's where they're at. And if they realize that probably the town needs to be the driver of that, continue to be the driver. We also talked about in the future that, you know, we need to start thinking about a committee. That has a representative from EMS, fire departments, possibly the commissioners, town council.
Like an advisory.
Advisory group, yeah, meeting on a regular basis and giving that input to the director. Here are the things we need to improve on. Here's, here's what's going well. Here's what, you know. We'd like to see strive towards, things like that. And then if user fees need to be increased. You know, they would have some discussion points on that. Or, you know, the town or the director see that user rates need to be bumped or whatever. Also some discussion on accounting wide levy for nine one one. Their user rates are, they can do it, but it isn't gonna take too many bumps. And they're gonna be at a point where they can't support nine one one either. So maybe we need to look at, is there another way where everybody can pitch in to help nine one one a little bit? Obviously taxes are high in Lake County. Everybody's paying their fair share. But if we wanna keep nine one one local in Lake County, we're gonna have to. Maybe take a hard look at that, see what, see what that looks like. See if that's something that the public would entertain or not, so. Haven't gone down that road yet, but it's on the list of things to, to at least explore. So. This is a little bit of a flip from what we've talked about in the past, but I think it really is the best decision to make.
I think you're totally right and I'm really thankful that. And whoever caught that on the PERS, cause that would have been a heck of a blow if we'd have missed that, you know? And you know, like you said, you know, they gotta update their equipment and, you know, those are the top of the list, so.
I do commend the town for taking on Actec for helping with all of their software and. Computer issues and phone, things like that, like we have provided here in this building for the county. You know, we're already seeing improvements down there as far as some of those things. And that list was pretty big, you know, of things that needed to improve, so. But Actec is starting to prioritize and figure out what all that we need to do to help make that be more successful down there too.
So is the town, are they agreeable, agreeable when it comes to setting up an advisory board?
I think so, yeah. We need to keep working on it. We haven't worked out any details on that. That's just, you know, down the road a little bit, but right now. They're focused on some of their discussions with their union. Getting things set up right. They're focused on determining pay rates that are. Keep employees in place, and sustainable, that are affordable and get, you know. People wanna be at the job and then, you know. We talked a little bit about supervision and whatnot. A lot of time. Long time there, we were talking about the sheriff being ultimately in charge of nine one one. Will no longer be doing that. Because when you have a county supervisor and a town employee. You still have that, that line between and we've determined that, you know, it needs to be. Either you're a county employee or you're a town employee and supervision needs to be in the same places.
I think there's a committee, like committee for nine one one or something like that. Actually, I think it needs to. One of the missions that it should have is to pursue their levy. If there's going to be a levy, that should fall on the committee that has representatives from every single user group. It shouldn't come from us. And it should be that committee's mission to go out and gather signatures, advocate and say, yeah, this is, this is a need. It would have a much higher chance of success. But also double in duty to, to represent the needs. Of nine one one operationally as well. Similar to how the IGC used to operate.
I think my role right now is, you know, how do you even go about that? You know, they need a little help. And the committee hasn't even informed.
Right, right, right.
So we're ways down the road from any of that, but, you know, what is the process? You know, talking with Dave Knowles at the accessory, you know, what, you know, how, what do you, how do you even start with things like that?
Yeah, when I was going through some of the old records, when they had levies in the past. A lot of times rather than doing a permanent rate, it would just do a temporary levy. And then you could reevaluate that in the future and build again.
That's exactly what.
It keeps people at the table. They know that it's only temporary. We can look at this again.
It expires in four years or five years.
Cause at that point we might decide maybe local isn't the way we wanna do it anymore or whatever. So keep your options open.
Other than that, last week I, Salem, I met with Hunter Amrick, our other attorney. Talked to him a little bit about, you know, the railroad contract that we still, we need and then also our code enforcement. Things that his firm is, firm that he's with is working on for us as well to ensure that those are moving forward.
So did he give you a timeline that far as those were out?
No, just that it's on it. Nothing's, nothing's imminent right now with the railroad as far as I'm aware, you know, need to get those updated, but. You know, he knows that we've been asking for that for a while now. Just wanna make sure that keeps on his list of things to do. And then the other thing I just wanna bring up, you know. Last week we signed a letter that went out to the governor of Oregon. Senators, both senators, congressmen and whatnot, and then our local house representative and state senator. Uh, describing the issue we had with the wildfire, on the Golden Fire, and how broadband got burned up. Go back online, but the effect that it had on all of our infrastructure and businesses here in Lake County. And our need for broadband redundancy in Lake County. And we know that there's a. Next round of funding coming around called the BEAT grant. And we've asked for their support to help out Lake County. So I know we've all signed it and everything, but I just wanna bring that out publicly that we're doing everything we can to. Push the envelope to help get more redundancy for our county so that. The Golden Fire, the next Golden Fire doesn't choke us down like it did last time.
Okay, and meanwhile, they wanna, they wanna go to a whole digit currency. It's tied to it though, you know, the idea. You have banks, you know, four banks doing, you know, handwritten receipts during the Golden Fire, you know, and incident here will be the most broadband. For, for days, you know, I mean, even if we got redundant internet, it's not a guarantee that those things don't happen. You know, and they, you still don't lose connection and all of a sudden.
They have power.
Yeah, no one can, no one can buy gas. No one can get food. No one can do anything. Commerce is just brought to a halt, you know, without the ability to utilize legal tender.
I think a lot of businesses and residents have worked on their own personal redundancy.
Yeah.
Backup options as well.
Right.
All right. Any word from Mr. Knowles? Okay. Is this self explanatory or do we need him to?
It's just his yearly housekeeping. He has a list of personal property accounts for you guys to consider. That have been. Removed. They've been.
Destroyed or?
Destroyed.
These aren't real big numbers either.
No, there's all like these small personal property accounts. All of them have been destroyed. Some of them have been deceased and destroyed. Um, the total tax that you would receive from these accounts is one thousand one hundred twenty six dollars and four cents. And he's deemed these as uncollectible. He's getting ready to publish the foreclosure list and. Doesn't seem, why would you wanna publish this, you know? Just some housekeeping. And the other item he has to present is just designating a newspaper to publish the foreclosed property list. When it's complete.
Even the Lake County Denver. Anything else?
I have a PEIS hearing on solar being placed on BLM that started five minutes ago.
Okay.
So I'm gonna run and jump on that. I'll be on that probably for the next hour and a half. At the conclusion of this meeting today, I'm likely going to be convening a small group of agency folks. Likely here in Lake County or maybe in Bend. Uh, later, I have it next month, September, I'm not sure yet, but. To kind of discuss and go over some of the PEIS for later in the year when we present final comment.
You wanna give that a cut amount?
Um, no. I actually can't remember. It's a, it's a environmental.
Impact.
Impact study, preliminary, I think it is.
Preliminary.
Yes, preliminary. Environmental impact study on the siting process for solar on BLM public lands. And it's actually being headed up, changed the BLM employees that have facilitated the meeting several times. But it's being led primarily by a DOJ lawyer who I met with when I was in DC. And Director Manning with BLM. She was the attorney that was present in the room when we were there in DC and. She's heading up the, the legal aspects of the PEIS, which they're accelerating at a rapid pace. I just don't know what's all going to come from it. I know a lot of the agency folks have a lot of questions and they've called me offline. To ask my thoughts and to, out of curiosity, I think I may be one of the only elected officials attending. A lot of the other people that are present seem to be representing special interest groups. And just as a caveat to the conversations that are taking place, there was a, a young lady. On the call a few weeks ago. And her frustration as she voiced on the call was that she didn't understand what the big issue was. With, with solar on creating any kind of. Offset for agricultural use on these public lands. And she couldn't fathom in her mind how solar panels being placed required any kind of mitigation. For impacts to grazing.
Got a lot of work to do.
So, yeah, after I finished screaming in silence with my phone on mute. Uh, I, I calmed down and realized that the reality is a lot of the people that seem to be participating in this process. Have never seen a large scale solar utility project and they also have no. Understanding of. How large a cow is apparently, quite honestly.
Or how can you utilize.
How they use the landscape, how the landscape responds. Yeah, so there's just a lot of pieces to this to unpack and educate. And, I mean, people, you know, the great thing about a free country is even the stupid people are allowed to speak. And, and everyone knows how stupid they are. And, and everyone knows how stupid they are.
So, mildly, you know, it's like I told you a hundred times, is that when it comes to B L M and having solar put on that, we still have an agreement, whether it be a pilt or a sit of some kind. To the county, so the counties are.
Yeah, here we are, seventy-six percent federal land.
Yeah.
And energy potentially being created on public land, which we see in Nevada going on, and we see in other states. But we still gotta have some kickback to the county that's hosting all this.
Yeah, yeah, I think the argument is, is that utility-scale projects of any kind are private investment, whether on private or public lands, and therefore are subject to taxation the same as any other private enterprise construction. So, it's not, it's not like the O D F N W is building some of their ranger station buildings on a garage for their operation. It's not their buildings, it's a private entity constructing large-scale utility projects for profit on these landscapes that still fall within the footprint of our county, whether on public land or not, and therefore should be subject to that local taxation. That's the argument. I, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure the Pharaoh will want his slice of the pie. I, I, I think the feds will want their piece in the end, but.
And the feds are trying to.
Yeah, they can do their, that.
Decide what they, you know, this is a request coming on public lands they're seeing more and more of. How much are they gonna allow, where, you know? They got a lot of things to consider because it's a, a natural thing, but it, you know, multiple use is a, a goal of theirs, especially B L M.
Right, right. And low-conflict land is a matter of perspective, depending on who you're talking to. So, you know, it's, that's the, that's the struggle. They can say we're looking at only the low-conflict land and the, you know, and so forth, but there's, in my opinion, there's millions of acres of low-conflict land that fall within W S As. So, and not sliding solar on most, so.
Yeah, tell the preventee that it doesn't affect them.
Yeah, right.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.